Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome back to Infancy Narratives, Matthew, Part 2. So just a little review from last time, just some reminders. Again, each gospel account is a portrait being painted of who Jesus is for a particular audience in a particular place. So Matthew is seems to be written between 80 and 90 AD, again, some 50 to 60 years after the resurrection, written by Matthew or Levi, one of the 12, a Greek speaker who knew Aramaic, written for converts from the religion of Israel to Christianity, and written to people in the Christian center of Antioch. Couple key themes, remember to keep these in mind, because it's going to help you make sense more about these things that we're going to talk about today, is that Matthew was writing to explain who Jesus is to that audience. Moses is a great hero of the faith, so you're going to see some parallels between the story of Moses and the story of Jesus, to show how Jesus is the new and improved Moses. And you'd actually see that, again, in the gospel outside the infancy narratives. And he's the fulfillment of prophecies, so these people would know the Jewish prophecies. And so he's reminding them of the things that they know and how they're fulfilled in the person of Jesus Christ. Okay? So those are just some things to remember. And remember, we talked about this narrative has five parts, the genealogy, well, the genealogy and then five parts. The first dream, which we talked about last week, and the other four parts we're going to talk about today, Herod and the Magi, the second dream of Joseph, Herod and the children, and the third dream of Joseph. Okay? So that's what you read about for today, that's what we're going to spend our time talking about today. So just to remind you of some things to help you understand, to put a paradigm, to put a box around how we're understanding what's happening in these texts, if you can understand what the author's trying to accomplish, who he's writing to, that sort of thing. Okay? All right, so... Let's talk about the first part, Herod and the Magi. So that's good old Herod. So just to give you a reminder of who Herod is and who Herod is not, so remember, we had the line of kings, David and Solomon and so on, he's not, not in that line of kings. Okay? So if you remember, 300 years before the birth of Christ, there was a man named Alexander from Macedon, who conquered the entire Mediterranean area. So this is 330 B.C. He extends his Greek culture to that entire area. Okay? So the predominant culture becomes what's called a Hellenistic culture, a Greek-based culture, based on their language, based on their customs, based on their traditions, based on very Greek things. We're reading in Maccabees right now, in the Liturgy of the Hours every day, and that's, they exist about 150 years after Alexander, about 150 years before Jesus, and they're struggling, trying to rebel against this imposition of a Greek culture on what should be a culture rooted in God and the law. So Alexander the Great brings Hellenism, expands with all its good and its bad, because they did bring science and politics and other things that were good, philosophy, to the area, but they also brought cultures that were very pagan, traditions that were very pagan to the area. So as I said, the Maccabees revolted about 150 years later, but then finally, there's a Roman named Pompey, who invaded the area in 63 B.C. So at this point, the Greek culture, the Alexander the Great culture is gone, but its remnants remains. So all, everybody talks, speaks Greek at this point. Everybody speaks Greek in commerce and trade and all these kinds of things, because you can talk to anybody around the Mediterranean area if you speak Greek. Okay? So there's remnants of it, but the Romans in 63 B.C. take over the territory, they don't try to erase the whole culture, and they speak the Greek language too. Okay? So we think Romans, we think Latin. Latin was for government, but most everybody, everybody spoke Greek, and that's what most things were done in. They placed this family in power in Palestine. When I say Palestine, please don't think of Palestine of the 21st century, please think of Palestine as meaning the entire area on the east end of the Mediterranean Sea, between the mountains of Lebanon, well, between, really, between what we call Asia Minor, we would today call Turkey, and Egypt. Everything between there on the eastern coast of the Mediterranean, they call that Palestine. And so they put the Herodians in charge. They gave them quite a bit of authority, as long as they kept the peace and as long as the taxes were paid. Okay? So that's what the Romans really cared about. Power and these kings grew, especially under this guy, Herod the Great. He was a, he reigned from 37 to 4 B.C. So from 37 to 4, he's the king in Palestine, he's very shrewd. At first, he supports Mark Antony, some of you remember Mark Antony from the stories about Julius Caesar, right? So Julius Caesar is assassinated, there's a struggle for who's going to control Rome, he originally backs Mark Antony, and then he realizes that's a lost cause, and it's a sinking ship, pun intended, and he starts to back Octavian instead. So he gets even more power. He now is autonomous, means he has absolute rule in all domestic matters. Okay? So Romans give him complete control on everything that has to do with Palestine and just Palestine. If it crosses boundaries, then of course, he doesn't have that control, though within Palestine, he does everything. He bumps off all his rivals, as many of these tyrants do, but he did also work on cultural improvements, lots of building projects, lots and lots of building projects, including the renovation of the second temple and the glorification of the second temple. So there was the second temple, Solomon builds the first one, there's the second one when they come back from exile, 500 years before Herod, that's still standing, but it's not in good shape, and it's not as lovely as it should be, so Herod fixes it, makes it more grand, so he does that. But he's never really accepted by the Jews, because he's not a Jew. He's not part of the Judea, he's not a descendant of Judah, that the kings are supposed to be descendants of. And so they never really fully accept him as their king, but they tolerate him, because they have to, because he's got all the power. And especially tolerated by his 10 wives. So this is Herod that we're talking about, Herod the Great, okay? And then we got these guys, Manny, Mo, and Jack. No. Mo, Larry, and Curly, no, that's not it. It's the Magi. This is a, this is a big question among Bible scholars, is details about the Magi. So I'm going to tell you what we know and some speculation about who these guys are. Our understanding of who they are has evolved over time. When we find new texts that help us understand the times, understand the cultures, we get new understandings of who these guys are. So it's not that we were wrong before, we just had an incomplete picture. And as we discover new things and put those things in conversation with the things we already know, you start to see some slight changes of what we understand about them. It was originally thought that they were Persian priests. Now, when you hear priests, don't think Catholic, don't think even Levitical priests, or the priests of the covenant, think Zoroastrian priests. Okay? So they were people who offered sacrifice, and they belonged to this religion, Zoroastrianism, which is very common in the Middle East at that time. Persia, when you hear Persia, anybody know where Persia is today?
Iran.
Iran, yep. Persia is Iran. They claimed to have the ability to interpret dreams, they were into reading the stars, and it was thought that when they read, when something new and exciting happened in the stars, that was indicating that there was a major event happening. Okay? So this is what we know about them, from as far back as we know anything about them, is they were from the east, probably Persia, but we'll talk about that in a second. They had, they thought they had the ability to interpret dreams, and they looked at the stars as a natural sign that something significant was happening. It's assumed, by, because of the text, that they're Gentiles, so they're not Jews. Okay? And that's assumed because we came to find out where the king is to be born. Well, if they were Jews, they would have known the Old Testament, and they would have known where the king was supposed to be born. So by the fact that they're asking the question, it's a logical assumption that they're not Jews, they're Gentiles. We use the word magoi, which is a Greek word, which is where we get the word Magi from. What does that word actually mean, and what does it not mean? Well, it doesn't mean wise men. Okay? Because that's too generic. There's lots of people that are wise, but they're not Magi. So it's not, it's not a good translation to call them Magi, because that's too broad of a term for who these people are. They're not kings, because they're not royalty. So when we talk about the three kings, they're not kings, they're not royalty. Okay? It's not really a great word to translate them as astrologers, because in 21st century Western culture, when we hear the word astrology, what do we think of? The zodiac. Okay? We think of the Gemini, and Libra, and Taurus, and all those things, right? And so that's not what they were into, this was not, this was not that kind of thing. So astrology literally means astrologos, it just means the systematic study of the stars. It doesn't mean trying to interpret people's fate based on where this planet happens to be right now. Okay? So that's not a great translation either. So the best word to use is just Magi. And when we say Magi, we just need to know who we're talking about, the people who came to see the Christ child. Okay? So where are they from? The word Magi comes from the Persian language. So there's a very good reason, because remember, the Greek translation of Magi was magoi. So they were, the ancient Greeks were already saying they're Magi. And Magi comes from Persia, so it's a good thing to think, well, maybe they're Persians. Okay? But the Persians weren't known for watching the stars. The people known for watching the stars were the Babylonians. Anybody know where Babylon is? Iraq, yes. So there's a good chance that they're not Persians, but Babylonians, because of their habit of watching the stars, which the Persians typically didn't do. The gifts they bring are things that are found in either the Syrian desert or Arabia. So they don't bring things that are unique to Persia, they don't bring things that are unique to Babylon, they bring things that are unique to the Syrian desert and Arabia. So there's some thought that maybe they actually came from the Syrian desert and Arabia. So what do we know? We know they're not from North America or South America, we know that they're not from Europe, we know they're not from Asia, East Asia, so they're not from China, Japan, India. Where they are, we know they're probably not from Sub-Saharan Africa, so where are they from? We don't really know, but those are all three good guesses, Persia, Babylon, and the Syrian desert or Arabia. Okay? Greg?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, they got to run up too quick, but first kind of study that their names were unknown.
Well, we didn't get there yet. So if you're going to ask them about names, hold on, I'll be there in a second. Okay? So just, we're not, right now, we're just talking about, say, where do they come from? So because they brought three gifts, it's assumed, assumed, that there was three of them. The text doesn't tell us that. It just said that "they" came from the east. So it could be two, it could be 2,000. Okay? We don't, the text does not tell us how many of them there were. The Western Christian traditions, so places like Italy, Spain, France, Northern Europe, the north coast of Africa, it's been developed, the tradition that there was three of them, one for each of the gifts. The text doesn't actually tell us that. And so the names in the West, assigned to them, is what Greg was alluding to just now, is Kaspar, Melchior, and Balthazar. Okay? That's the names we've assigned to them in the West. And if you've had Father Mick come and bless your house, you know, he whips out his chalk, and he writes above the door, a blessing that includes the letters C, M, and B, which stand for Kaspar, Melchior, and Balthazar. Okay? But we do not know their names, that's just a tradition that's developed in the West, because we assume that there was three, and somehow, these, these names were assigned, these names were assigned eighth century, if I remember correctly. If you look in Eastern Christianity, there's completely different sets of names. In some places, they don't name them at all, and they don't number them at all, and in some places, they have different names. So like in Babylon, they would have different names, in Syria, they would have different names. So in the West, we tend to assign them names, Kaspar, Melchior, and Balthazar. Did I answer your question? We've also developed over the last centuries, maybe the last thousand years, that, well, not even that long, probably more the last like 600 years, we've, we've also given them ethnic diversity. So that's actually not new, and many of you probably, if you have color, painted nativity scenes, you've got kings that look like different ethnicities, and that's not by chance, that's actually a develop, a development of the, of the tradition, the lore in the West, is that they represented the whole world. So there was one that looks like he's from Africa, there's one that looks like he's from Asia, there's one that looks like he's from Europe, and that's the known world at that time. And so, so we, so we've kind of incorporated that into our mythology about the Magi, that they came from different ethnic cultures. And I'll explain to you why in a little bit, but, but that's something we've also done, but that's not in the text. So the text just says, "they came from the east bearing their gifts." So what did they do? They saw the star at its rising. In antiquity, people who watched the stars, astral phenomena, so things that happened in, among the stars, that we didn't really know, were seen as accompanying also the birth and the death of great figures. So if a new constellation of stars, a new star that hadn't been observed before, was seen in the sky, that meant that somebody great was either born or died. Now, we're not talking about planets, we're not talking about just a star that we hadn't recognized before. Mostly, what they probably were observing was comets, or what's called a supernova, the birth of a star. Okay? And without getting into too much science, they observed these things with the naked eye for the most part, they might have had a very simple lens that they could have looked through, but for the most part, they're looking at naked eye, and they were tracking these things very carefully, and they saw that there was something new in the heavens, there was something new in the sky, and so they saw that star and said, this must mean the birth or death of somebody great. If you look at Numbers, anybody have their Bible open? Book of Numbers, which is the Genesis, Exodus, the fourth book of the Bible, after Leviticus and before Deuteronomy. So if somebody could look up Numbers, chapter 24. Can you throw your hand up when you've got it? Thanks, Denny. So this is Math, Numbers 24, verse 17. Can you just read that verse for us?
So he went to Balak, who was still standing by his burnt offering together with the prince of Moa, but Balak asked him, what did the Lord say?
Okay.
Wait, that's 23, I had to remember.
I was going to say, that doesn't sound like 24. 24:17?
Yep.
Okay, Danny, try it again.
I see him, though not now. I observe him, though not near. A star shall advance from Jacob, and a scepter shall rise from Israel. That will crush the brows of Moa and the skull of all Setites.
Setites, very good, thank you. So that star coming forth from Jacob, who's Jacob? Please, somebody tell me, do you know who Jacob is? Nobody? Jacob is the grandson of Abraham? Remember? Isaac's son? Jacob's, no, Jacob's name is changed to Israel? So the founder of the 12 tribes of Israel, the father of all of Israel? So from, it says coming from Jacob, that means from one of the 12 tribes, so the Israelites. And so there's a star saying, so according to the prophecy from Numbers, that somebody special would come forth from the line of Jacob. The text says, they're looking for the king of the Jews. So the king of the Jews is interchangeable in this Matthew text with Messiah or Christ. So sometimes they use the word Messiah, anybody remember what Messiah means in Hebrew? Same thing as Christ does in Greek? The Anointed One, yes. So the Messiah is the Anointed One, the one chosen and anointed. Remember who was anointed when he became king? David, yes, very good. So Messiah and king of the Jews is kind of used here interchangeably. Okay? Because the Messiah will be a descendant of David, who will be king of the Jews. So the term is used interchangeably. The text goes on to say that, "Herod consulted with the chief priests and the scribes." Have you heard that phrasing before anyplace else in the Bible? The chief priests and the scribes? Do you remember anyplace else where they were lumped together as having something to do with what was going on in the gospel? The Passion of Christ, yes, very much so, exactly. So perhaps Matthew is tying that phrasing, chief priests and scribes, with what he's going to put later in the gospel, when he gets to his passion account. The text says that "the child is to be born in Bethlehem of Judea." Did you find it surprising that said Bethlehem of Judea, and that said just Bethlehem? How many Indianapolises do we have? We have ones, right, in Indiana? We don't have to say the Indianapolis of Pennsylvania. So the reason why they said the Bethlehem of Judea is because there's two Bethelhams. There's a Bethlehem of Judea and a Bethlehem in Galilee. So that, so Matthew's making sure that people know that it's the Bethlehem of Judea. Anybody, can anybody open to Micah? He's one of the later prophets, chapter 5. So I need Micah, chapter 5. Diane, can you read verses 1 and 2 for us? Micah, chapter 5, verses 1 and 2.
Bethlehem.
Ephrathah.
These are among the clans of Judea. From you shall come forth the lean, one who is ruler of Israel, whose origin is from the old, from ancient. Therefore the Lord will give them up on server time, when she needs to be reborn.
Thank you. So the prophecy, Micah 5:1 says Bethlehem Ephrathah. Matthew doesn't copy that exactly, does he? He says Bethlehem of Judea, he doesn't say Bethlehem Ephrathah. It is the same place, but by saying Bethlehem of Judea, Judea is the, is the southern region of Israel, you have Galilee, Samaria, Judea. Judea is where the descendants of Judah live. So this word that we use, Jew, really refers to the Judaites and the Judeans, because that's really the same thing. That's why you keep hearing me say not Judaism, and you keep hearing me say the religion of Israel, because it's not just the religion of Judea, the Judaites is the religion of all of them. Okay? So he says Bethlehem of Judea instead of Bethlehem Ephrathah. What's the connection he's hoping we're going to make? Judea, descendants of Judah, who's a descendant of Judah? Starts with a D, rhymes with mavid. So David, so he wants us to see the connection that Jesus is coming from the place of David. Why is that important? David was the king, and Jesus is the king. Okay? So Matthew takes a little liberty there, doesn't say Bethlehem Ephrathah, he says Bethlehem of Judea. It's the same place, but he's calling it in a different way. So it's like, it's like, if there wasn't Indianapolis in Pennsylvania, Indianapolis of Indiana, or Indianapolis of race fame. Right? It's the same place, but maybe by saying race fame, I'm speaking to a different audience than something that's going to hit, touch off something for them. Okay? So he says Bethlehem Ephrathah, changes it to Bethlehem of Judea. Then it says, in Micah, it says, "too small to be among the clans of Judah," didn't it? Too small to be among the clans of Judah. Matthew changes his translation of that to the rulers of Judah. By no means least among the rulers of Judah. Who are, who is the ruler of Judah? David. David's the real ruler, King Herod is the king right now, but the real ruler of Judah, of the house of Judah, is David. Okay? And so by saying, changing it from clans, too small among the clans, to too small among the rulers, he's reminding us that from Judah comes the ruler, the real Messiah, the royal one, the king, and Jesus is that royal one, coming from Bethlehem of Judea. And so calling to mind Micah, that they would have known, but he changes the word there in his translation to remind them that this is the descendant of the king. Okay? Lots of little things here, but if you keep those two, remember, those two, those two themes in mind, about his relationship to Moses and his fulfillment of the prophecies, you can see why Matthew's doing what he's doing. Painting a portrait of who Jesus is for his particular audience. Says they went into the house, went into the house. Do you find, did you find that strange, that they went into the house? Where did you expect them to go into? Into a stable, right? Okay. So don't go home and throw all your stables in the garbage, but it's probably not a stable, the way we think of a stable. And it probably wasn't a cave, the way we think of a cave. Okay? What it probably was, was a house. In the house, they would have had room that the people slept in, and they would have had a room that the animals slept in, the small animals, the sheep and goats and things. Okay? So they went into the house, where they, where they encountered Mary and the child. So the house is probably also where he was born, he was laid in a manger, doesn't say anything about him being in a stable, we assume that, because we wouldn't keep sheep and goats in our houses. Excuse me. But they did, they did. Okay? So the manger still would have been there as a feeding trough for those animals, but that's Luke, and we're not talking about Luke anymore, we're just talking about Matthew. So there's, I just wanted you to point, to point out, there's no apparent contradiction between what happens with the animals in Luke and going into the house in Matthew, because it probably was the same thing. Notice, by the way, who's not there? They encountered Jesus with Mary, but Joseph's not there. So people have made all kinds of things about that, but, but notice, the text does say that Joseph, doesn't say anything about Joseph being there. They presented their gifts of gold and frankincense, I mean, frankincense and myrrh. Can somebody turn to Isaiah 60 for me? Isaiah 60, so Isaiah is in with the big prophets, Jeremiah and Ezekiel, it's in that area of the Bible. So you got it, Susan? Isaiah 60, verse 6, nice and loud.
Caravans of camels shall fill you. From the areas from Midian and Eppa, all from Shiva shall come, carried gold, frankincense, and proclaiming the praises of the Lord.
Okay, thank you. So Matthew's calling to mind this prophecy, that all the nations will come and honor the Messiah, and they will bring gifts. And they brought gifts, two of the same ones that Isaiah mentions 500 years earlier, gold and frankincense. There's a lot that's been written and said about what these gifts were and what meanings they are, but I think, God bless you, I think a good meaning to assign to them is gold, who gets gold? Somebody who's rich, right? Who's rich, who's richest in those days? A king. So gold, bringing gold to the Christ child, means you recognize he's a king, and he deserves gold. Okay? The frankincense, frankincense is that gum that's chopped up into little pieces and sprinkled on a hot coal, and it gives off a fragrant smoke. Okay? So who gets and has a right to get frankincense? The smoke that comes from the frankincense, who has a right to that? Nope, not the priest, priest has a right to use it to give to?
God.
God. Okay? So God has a right to frankincense, to incense. So by giving this child frankincense, what are they saying about the child?
God.
He's God. Okay? So they're giving him gold, because they know he's a king, they're giving him frankincense, because they know that he is God. And then there's this other one, which is not mentioned in Isaiah 60, but Matthew includes myrrh. Now, there's one other place in Matthew's gospel. Now, there's one other place in Matthew's gospel where myrrh is going to be mentioned. Anybody remember where? It's passion and death. Okay? So myrrh was used in those days as something for preparing a body for burial. Okay? Kind of like we would use embalming fluid today. Okay? So the myrrh symbolizes his death. Can you imagine bringing a child? Can you imagine bringing a child gold? Sure. Can you imagine bringing a child frankincense? Probably not. Can you imagine bringing a child for his first birthday party, embalming fluid? So Matthew is pointing the reader, the hearer, to what's going to happen. His death is a special death. His death is a salvific death. Okay? So Matthew is pointing ahead. The Magi were told, were warned in a dream to go back to their country by another way. Okay? I want to mention two little fun things about the Magi before I move on. Has anybody here ever heard the story, The Gift of the Magi by O. Henry? Some of you are nodding yes. It's a really good story, you should go back and read it. There's this very poor couple, husband and wife, and they want to get each other a special gift for Christmas, but they have very, very little money, just barely enough to survive on. So the husband sells his pocket watch to buy, his wife has very beautiful hair, to buy some special combs for her hair. The wife sells her combs, or sells her hair to buy a chain for her husband's pocket watch. Okay? So I'm not gonna tell you the rest of the story, but that's called The Gift of the Magi. I'd certainly recommend to go out and read it. It's written by O. Henry. The other one is a book written by a guy named Henry Van Dyke, and it's called The Other Wise Man. And it was actually a made-for-TV movie back in the eighties starring Martin Sheen. There's a fourth one that sets out with the other three. And he gets separated from them. And he's bringing precious gems, a sapphire, a ruby, and a pearl of great price. Another phrase from the Gospels, but anyways. And without spoiling the story, it's about his endeavor to present these gems to the Christ child and what happens to him along the way. So I'd also recommend it. It's a great, like I said, there's a movie version of it with Martin Sheen. It was made for TV in the 1980s. You can find it on YouTube, but it's called The Other Wise Man. And it's a very good story. Why? So why does Matthew put all this stuff in here about the Magi? From their encounter with Herod to their presentation of the gifts to the child, to their going home another way? Why does he put all this in there? How does it help Matthew's audience? Remember, we talked about, you can read at the level of what happened in the account, which is what we've been talking about. But why did the author of the gospel, the human author, under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, why did he include it in his gospel account, in his portrait of who Jesus is, for the sake of his audience? Why did he include that in there? Excuse me. Remember, they're Gentiles. What's going on in Matthew's community? Matthew's community is being persecuted. Remember, we said that? Being persecuted by the Romans, being persecuted by the Jews. So they're being challenged to stay as a community in Christ. They're being challenged to trust Christ. They're being challenged to support each other. So they're having a hard time. So Matthew wants to show that these Gentiles, they don't even know who God is. But they come to believe, and they prefigure other members of the community coming to the community. So as Gentiles are coming to the community, we say, oh, well, there's a good example we have of Gentiles coming to honor Christ as God, to honor Christ as king, to recognize his salvific death. These Gentiles are doing that. So Gentiles joining us, we know that you can be very faithful too, just like these Magi were. Okay? And the Jews that are struggling, you say, look, even the Gentiles believe. How could we not be strong in our faith in the Lord? So he's using this to help the community to trust in God, to remember who Jesus is. He is Son of Abraham. He is Son of David. He's the Messiah, he's Son of God. He's Emmanuel, God with us. And he promised at the end of the gospel that he would stay with us forever. So he puts this Magi account in there in big part to help the community trust, to help the Gentiles coming in, say they have examples, help the Jews say even the Gentiles believe. And he ties it to the end. Remember, the very last thing in the Gospel of Matthew that Jesus says to his disciples, "Go, make disciples of everybody who lives in Judea and Samaria." No. "Go, make disciples of everybody who is a descendant of Israel." No. "All nations." These three guys represent, if there's three of them, these people represent all the nations. So it's a tie-in to remember. And by the way, the same phrase Matthew uses at the very beginning of the gospel and the very end of the gospel. What do the Magi do when they see the Christ child? And what does the text say? What does the text say in Matthew, chapter two? Find me the exact text. When you've got the exact text. "Did him homage." Okay? The Magi did him homage. At the very end of the gospel, when they come up to Jesus right before the ascension, as he goes up, they did him homage. Two times in the text, Matthew uses that phrase. Once for the Magi before Jesus and once for the apostles before Jesus. They did him homage. Okay? Don't think that's by chance. This is, can you get so far that this guy is an excellent writer? He's pulling up the ideas that people, he wants them to have in their minds. He's making references to things that they should know, that point to Jesus. He's tying beginning Jesus of life and end of Jesus' life together by same phrases and similar events. So a magnificent writer. Okay. So that's the Magi. So we're gonna move now from Herod and the Magi to Joseph's second dream. By the way, we joked in seminary when we were doing the prayer of Saint Joseph. So people were asking, did you pray last night? I always said, yeah, I did the prayer of Saint Joseph. You know what the prayer of Saint Joseph is? Because he's always sleeping and dreaming. So we would joke that it was the prayer of Saint Joseph. So Joseph has his second dream, says, "Take Mary and the child and flee to Egypt." What does Egypt represent for the children of Israel? Safety? Oh, okay. So what Lynn's pointing to is at first, it was a famine. You're remembering the famine. And so they went to Egypt to be fed, to be rescued from famine and certain death for lack of food. Okay? It's a good point. It's a good point. The rest of you were saying slavery, right? Yeah. So slavery, that also represents, so Egypt is a very power-packed place for the descendants of Israel. That's where they went to go get food. It's where they were held in slavery. It's where God rescued them and offered them covenant. I mean, it's a very important place. And so I don't think it's by chance that Matthew has the flight in Egypt. By the way, on the flight into Egypt, do you know who flew the plane? Punches pilot. Sorry. Anyways, so what does the dream say? "Go there. Go there. Stay there until I tell you to come back." God is watching out for the holy family and in the Lord Jesus. Go there and stay there. God is directly intervening to protect the holy family. Do you think God would directly intervene to protect us from true harm? Yes. And that's what Matthew shows us in the rest of his gospel. Herod wants to kill the child. Okay? So what about this Herod and the children? That's the slaughter of the innocents. Herod grows more afraid. So he's afraid now because his power is being threatened. The Magi came and said, "We know there's a new king of the Jews, a new Messiah, and you're not it. Where do we find him?" So he's afraid. So now he's growing even more afraid because the Magi don't come back to tell him where to find the child so he can destroy the child. So now he's even more afraid and more angry. And he acts in a way even more evil than the deception he first did when he lied to the Magi. "Oh, tell me so I can go worship him too." That was a lie. Now he's acting even more evil, in a more evil way, by threatening death. "He acts to kill the children two years old and under, according to the time told him by the Magi." And Matthew reminds us of a prophecy. Can you turn in your Bibles to the book of Jeremiah? I think it's right after Isaiah. If I remember correctly. Jeremiah, everybody find Jeremiah? Okay. Jeremiah, chapter 31. Joan, can you read us Jeremiah 31, verse 15? Jeremiah 31, chapter 31, verse 15. Thank you. So Matthew quotes that text, Jeremiah 31:15. I remember who Rachel is. It's part of a fun story. Somebody's saying it. Jacob's wife. So remember, Jacob had, well, two or four, depending how you want to count them. He went to his uncle to marry his daughter because his father told him to do so. And he sees Rachel, wants to marry her, but Laban tricks him, and he marries Leah. And then he's gotta work for seven years to get his wife, and he ends up getting Leah, the older sister. Then he has to work for another seven years, and then he gets Rachel as his wife. And Rachel can't have children at first, and he has children with Leah, Leah's concubine, or Leah's handmade servant. Then Rachel finally, and Rachel's servant. So that's where the 12 sons of Jacob come from. So Rachel is his favorite wife. That's the one he always wanted to marry. That's the mother of Joseph and Benjamin, the two favorite sons. So Rachel is weeping because her children are no more. So why does Matthew put this text in here? Well, in part because of the obvious connection that children are being slaughtered and their mothers are weeping. But he's also drawing to mind the prophet Jeremiah. Okay? If you know anything about Jeremiah, Jeremiah was always referred to as the reluctant prophet. He's the prophet who didn't want to be a prophet. And you can read all about that in the first chapters of the book of Jeremiah. But he suffers a lot for being God's prophet. He gets chucked into a well and left for dead. I mean, there's all different kinds of things that happen in Jeremiah. He suffers a lot, and he complains a lot about it too. He suffers a lot for the sake of being God's prophet. Does that remind you of anybody in the Gospel of Matthew who might suffer a lot for speaking God's words? Jesus. Okay? So what's Matthew doing? He's drawing a parallel now between Jeremiah and Jesus. So the direct one is, to us, the obvious thing, because we're not all experts in Jeremiah, and neither am I. But we connect the two things with the death of children and mothers crying, which is certainly there. But he's also, for his audience, reminding them of Jeremiah, by quoting from Jeremiah, this passage that they would have known, that reminds them of who Jesus is as God's suffering prophet, just like Jeremiah. So these different levels, isn't it pretty amazing? Ramah, the city that's referred to in that passage, is halfway between Jerusalem and Bethel. Rachel died in Bethlehem Ephrathah. Okay? So she died in Bethlehem of Judea. That's where her descendants lived. So she's weeping for her children, the descendants of her children in Bethlehem, who are being slaughtered by King Herod. Okay? So it's not just any mother weeping over her children, and these mothers weeping over her children. These are Rachel's children. Right? See that? Because they're in Bethlehem, Rachel's home, that's where her descendants are. These are her children, great, 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 great whatever grandchildren. But they're her children. They're part of her, they're part of her, they're part of her family. And she's weeping for them. And so Matthew calls that to mind. These are the children of Rachel. The wife of Joseph, I'm sorry, Jacob. Okay? So again, there's a lot going on in this passage with these innocents. And then another dream. Third dream, Joseph asleep again, and he has another dream. And in the passage, "Those who were seeking the death of the child." Didn't say "he" who was seeking the death of the child. Said "those" who were seeking the death of the child. So it's not just Herod, because Herod's not a plural. Herod's a singular. So there must be somebody else included in Matthew's intention there. Is it the chief priests and the scribes? Very likely, because who wants Jesus dead a whole lot later? The chief priests and the scribes. Is it all Jerusalem? Remember, in Matthew 2, verse 3, it said, "Herod was disturbed and along with him all of Jerusalem." So does all of Jerusalem want the child dead too? Could somebody look up Exodus, chapter four, for me? Exodus, chapter four. So Exodus is the second book of the Bible. Sharon, was that you saying you got it? Can you tell me, read for us, Sharon? Exodus, chapter four, verse, where did I lose it now? 19. Exodus 4:19. Thank you. Do you think that the Jewish converts to Christianity would have known that passage? From Torah, from Exodus, about the life of Moses? Yes. And so Matthew has basically the same dream coming to Joseph. "Those who were seeking your death are gone. Those who were seeking the death of the child are gone." Same phrasing. Matthew has them going to Nazareth. So remember, in Israel, there's Lebanon and the Golan Heights, Mount Hermon. And then you've got Galilee, and Nazareth is in Galilee. Then you go further south and you're in Samaria. And then you go further south and you're in Judea, which is where Jerusalem and Bethlehem are. And then you go further south and it's the desert. So God tells them to go to Nazareth. So for security, to go to Galilee, not Judea. Nazareth, some of you have been to Nazareth, I know, is an agricultural village. There's a lot of trees and vines and all kinds of things there. It's very good land. It's near a main trade route that in Jesus' time was a main trade route with Egypt. So he's going there. There's plenty of work for a carpenter. Joseph is called a tekton in Greek. It's most likely a person who works with wood, not necessarily building tables and chairs, but can be. But using wood for building things, using wood for building the yoke of oxen. So anything that was made out of wood, Joseph would have been doing. And there was a really, really big city named Sapporos that was being built nearby by Herod Antipas. And so there would have been certainly a lot of work there for a tekton, for what we usually translate as a carpenter or a woodworker. And so he's sent to Nazareth to grow up. And then we're told that he will be called a Nazarean. What is a Nazarean? So we don't exactly know for sure what Matthew intended, but here's some possibilities. Is he making a play on the word Nazarean, a Nazarene, a person from Nazareth? So that's one thing it might mean. It also might be based on this word Nazir. So a Nazir, a Nazarean, is a person who lived a Nazarite life. A Nazarite life would be a person who doesn't cut his hair. A Nazarite life would be a person who doesn't cut his hair, promises celibacy, doesn't drink wine or alcohol of any kind. And there's a person famously in the Old Testament who fits that description. He had great strength, except for when he met up with a woman. Samson. Okay, Samson, if you know the story of Samson from the book of Judges, Samson was a guy who rescued his people from slavery to the Philistines. Okay? So Samson is a hero because he saved God's people. Who is a great hero that saves God's people? Jesus. So Matthew is showing that Jesus is in the line of the Nazarites, like Samson. So he's calling Samson to mind. So it could be the reason why he uses the word Nazarean is based on the word Nazir, which we usually in English will translate as a Nazarite, a person who lives this Nazarite lifestyle, no cutting of the beard or the hair and so on and so on. So he could be alluding to that. He could also be alluding to the Hebrew word nasser. And a nasser means a branch. Could somebody turn to Isaiah 11 for me? We haven't heard from the back table back there of you all. So we need Book of Isaiah. Chapter 11. So Mary Ann or June, do you have Isaiah 11 back there? Okay, Isaiah 11, verse number one. Isaiah 11, verse 1?
Oh, verse 1.
Yeah. Thank you. So a nasser is a branch. And so a branch from the tree of Jesse. Who's Jesse? Anybody remember? Little more obscure. He had seven sons. David's father, yes, thank you. So a branch from the root of Jesse, which means one of Jesse's sons, which means David. And so that's a Messianic passage. That's a verse pointing to a Messiah who will be King David, you know, the leader of God's people. And so it could be that he's relating Jesus in Nazareth, a Nazarean, because he's a Nazir, he's a branch from the tree of Jesse, just like King David is a branch from the tree of Jesse. So theologians and Bible scholars will debate which of these Matthew has in mind when he says he will be called a Nazarean. One of the authors I read said, he's probably going for all three. Because his audience would have known all three and would probably have made all three of those connections. He's a Nazarean, we know he's from Nazareth. He's a Nazir. He's like a famous Nazir, Samson, who's a rescuer, a savior for the people from the Philistines. And he's a Nazir, he's a branch off the tree of Jesse, just like King David is a branch off the tree of Jesse. So somebody said that maybe he meant all three of those. It's very likely he could have, because I think all three of those words would have been familiar to those people as being close to a Nazarean. Okay? All right. We'll get to that in a second. So that's the end of Matthew, chapter 2. What is Matthew trying to communicate in chapter 2 of the infancy narrative? The second part of the infancy narrative? First of all, is he trying to communicate something historical? Remember, we talked about the historical Jesus, the actual Jesus and the gospel Jesus. Is he trying to be historical? Well, if he's trying to be historical, there's a lot of events in chapter 2 that are no place else in the tradition about Jesus. So if you look at Luke, nothing in chapter 2 is in Luke's gospel. There's no Herod mentioned really, there's no Magi, there's no slaughter of the innocents. Okay? So if he's trying to be historical, he's either making a bunch of stuff up or he's mentioning stuff that nobody else knows anything about. Okay? So probably not trying to be historical. And there's nothing outside the scriptures either that corroborates anything in Matthew. There's no extra biblical writings that say that, and this one day in Bethlehem, all the kids were killed. No, but there's no extra biblical sources that say that. Doesn't mean it didn't happen, just says there's no way to verify the historicity of it as we would think of it. So really, what's he trying to do? He's trying to say something to the community in Matthew, chapter 2. He's trying to say something to the Messian community about Jesus being the new Moses. So let's look at a comparison here. These are the events of the birth of Moses. These are the events of the birth of Jesus in chapter 2 in Matthew. There's a Pharaoh who's a wicked ruler. There's Herod, who's a wicked king. This Pharaoh, this wicked ruler, orders the murder of children, including presumably Moses. Here, the wicked king Herod orders the murder of children, presumably including Jesus. Okay? There's a marvelous rescue here of Moses. Remember the whole story about the basket and all that stuff? There's a marvelous rescue here, angels coming to Joseph, telling him to rescue the child and save him from being murdered. The child Moses flees Pharaoh. The child Jesus flees Herod along with his parents. After Pharaoh's death, Moses returns home. Remember how he killed the Egyptian and he flees for his life? He's told after Pharaoh's death that he can return home. After Herod's death, Jesus returns to his home, not Bethlehem, but Nazareth. And then the quote, the actual quote, "For all the men who were seeking your life are dead." "Those who were seeking the child's life are dead." Do you think people who thought Moses was all that, the lawgiver, the great rescuer from Israel, or from Egypt, do you think that they would have known all these things about Moses? You betcha. Okay, they would have known all, it's in Torah, it's the law. It's, I mean, that's, they know all these things about Moses. So Matthew's saying, just like Moses, all these things happened, so all these things happened to Jesus. Because Jesus is like a new Moses. And you're going to see in the rest of the gospel of Matthew that you're going to see, in fact, we start reading the gospel of Matthew on the first Sunday of Advent. So all next year we'll be reading Matthew. But you're going to see, like in the Sermon on the Mount, Moses goes up the mountain to give God's law. Jesus goes on the mountain to give God's law. So there's a constant connection between Jesus and Moses being drawn in this portrait of Jesus created for a particular audience with particular needs. Okay? So what can we say about the summary of this entirety of Matthew's infancy narrative? So of chapter 1 and chapter 2? Jesus is the Messiah, the Anointed One of God. Okay? We said from the very beginning that this would be something that Matthew is trying to show. Jesus is the Messiah, the Anointed One of God. In the genealogy, Matthew points out, he's the son of Abraham. Why is that important? Abraham is the father in faith. Abraham is the one that all begins with. Our relationship with God as a people all starts with Abraham. You will be the father of many nations. He becomes the father of Ishmael and all his descendants. He becomes the father of Isaac and Jacob and all of his descendants, the 12 tribes of Israel, including everybody who has participated in the covenant, follows the religion of Israel. Jesus is a son of Abraham. We showed it in the genealogy. Jesus is the son of God and Emmanuel. So at the end of that, the dream, the first dream of Joseph, the angel comes and says, "His name shall be Emmanuel, God with us." So he is God, he is the son of God, and he is God. So Matthew has established that. Matthew has established he's the son of David through the genealogy. And lots of references in chapter 2 pointing back to David, showing that Jesus is in the line of David. So he is a son of David. Therefore, he is automatically a king. Because David is the king and his descendants are kings. Matthew establishes Jesus as the new Moses, over and over and over again. You see it very strongly in chapter 2, but you see it in other places, too. Moses is the lawgiver. Jesus is the real lawgiver. And when you hear law, don't just hear rules, hear covenant. Okay? He gave the covenant at Sinai between God and the Israelites. Jesus gives the new covenant in his blood, thank you. And Moses is the savior. He rescued the people from slavery in Egypt. Jesus is the savior of the people who rescued us from the slavery of sin. So Matthew establishes Jesus as the new Moses. He's a new Jeremiah. We just talked about the prophet who suffered. Jesus is in the line of Jeremiah as a prophet who suffers, one who speaks for God and suffers for it. So Matthew's established him as a new Jeremiah. And he's established him as a new Samson, a savior of God's people. And we just talked about that with the Nazarite. So you see what Matthew has done here? Everybody who's a hero for the Israelites, for the children of Israel, Jesus is that. He's all of that. And most importantly, he's son of God. So this is what Matthew has been trying to do through reminding us of Old Testament prophecies, through parallels, through genealogy. This is what Matthew's been trying to do in these first two chapters of the beginning of the gospel. You could call it a prologue. The beginning of the gospel of Matthew, the first two chapters, the infancy narrative, this is what he's been trying to accomplish. Again, that community needs this. That community needs to hear these things because they're struggling under persecution to trust in God, to trust in Jesus, to stay close to Him. That's the second level. By the way, the third level is for us today. Do you think people today need to be reminded of this? That people today are struggling with their trust in God, their faith in God and Jesus? That people are being sometimes persecuted or being challenged because of their faith? They need to be reminded of these things? So remember those three levels? So what to make of all of this? Again, is Matthew trying to give us a history? Now, we said from the beginning, he wasn't trying to give us a historical Jesus because there are things that are not verifiable. There are things that are not necessarily consistent with the gospel according to Luke. Is he trying to give us the actual Jesus? Well, he didn't tell us what day he was born. He didn't tell us what his favorite ice cream was. He didn't tell us any of that stuff. I think Jesus liked chocolate. You know, we seem to know, by the way, I'm going to go on a side here. We seem to know his blood type, though. AB negative, some of you know this. I'm impressed. Do you know why we know that? Eucharistic miracles, where hosts have turned into cardiac tissue. It's always cardiac tissue. And they always test it to see what blood type, and it's always AB negative. Matthew didn't include that because he's not trying to give us that Jesus. So what's he trying to do is he's trying to give us the gospel Jesus. The portrait of Jesus that my people, this people, needs to hear because of what's going on in their lives, what's going on in the church today. This is what they need to hear about who Jesus is. So he's giving us this. He's not giving us a midrash. Midrash is a good Jewish word. Midrash is a, how do I want to explain it? It's storytelling like a homily. So if I make up a story in a homily, and you've heard me tell stories before in a homily that are not about real people, but just stories, like the three apprentice demons or Turn the Wheel, or some of these other stories I tell. It's not a story that's a homily made up to get a point across. It's a gospel account. He's not just taking Old Testament and fulfilling Old Testament just for fun. He's actually giving us a portrait of who Jesus is. The last one, I found this, this is a good, I think, explanation of the infancy narrative. What is the first two chapters of Matthew, an infancy narrative of a famous person? Raymond Brown. I mentioned in the first week that there's a book called The Birth of the Messiah. Everything you've ever wanted to know about the nativity of Jesus is in this book. I've read about half of it. Okay? It's written by, so if you ever want the definitive resource on the birth of Jesus, everything is in here, from the kind of wood the manger is made out of. Everything is in here. Birth of the Messiah by Raymond Brown. If you like collecting books about Bible, this is a great resource. This series called the Sacropogina Series. And this is the one on Matthew. So it's just the gospel of Matthew with commentary and the text and all that stuff. So that's a great series if you want a series of books that you really want to do some serious study. I'll be using that same version for Luke, for the Luke gospel. And then I mentioned before that if you're going to have one book on your shelf besides the Bible to help you understand the Bible, it should be this one, The New Jerome Bible Commentary. You see how thick it is? It's very, very small print. But it's a great commentary on the entire Bible. So they've got a chapter for every book of the Bible. And they've got other chapters that have commentaries like, where do you see the Eucharist throughout the Bible? And things like that. It's The New Jerome Bible Commentary. I paid $50 for this 20 years ago. But it's the one good resource that's out there for the entire Bible. So Matthew, according to Raymond Brown, in this infancy narrative, famous person, is trying to say that Jesus is an important person. I'm going to, this is what Raymond Brown would say. The infancy narrative of Matthew is taking this important person, realizing what they've done in their life, realizing what was leading up to their birth, and giving you a narrative of who this person is based on what they're going to do and what they were promised to be. Follow me? So he's taking, he's making his portrait based on everything he knows that Jesus did, what Jesus taught, the miracles, his death, his resurrection, his ascension. So he's writing this infancy narrative in part based on all the things he knows Jesus is going to do and looking back at everything that was prophesied about who Jesus would be. That's the infancy narrative that Matthew has given us.